I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
All members are present except for Lonnie and Jeremy.
With the legislative update, the Wisconsin Senate Education Committee voted to overhaul the Department of Public Instruction's changes to state test standards. Senate Bill 18 and Assembly Bill 01 are going to reset the report card standards levels back to 2019, 2020. Align grades three to nine with the national standards from the National Assessment of Education progress were made, and restore high school testing standards to levels set in 2021 and 22 school year. And it would require DPI to bring back the previous term for pupil performance assessments. This bill is going to be heard tomorrow on the Senate floor, so moving forward. The Wisconsin Assembly passed AB 74, which would create a requirement for school boards to notify parents if there's a report that their child is a victim of an actual assault by school staff. Under the bill, the school board would be required to notify the parent on the same day they receive the report. The bill also requires a school district to annually provide parents with information on how to assess records related to school employee discipline under the public records law. The bill was amended after bipartisan discussion to clarify when the parent should be notified. There was a timeframe of if it happens before noon, they have to be notified by four. If it happens afternoon, they have until the next morning by eight. So they've worked on, I'm reading that out.
I can't imagine any school district that would not notify.
Which is why WWE was kind of like, this is kind of fair, but they're dithering about the timeframe. Agreed. The Wisconsin Assembly Education Committee approved AB 101, and it will be heard tomorrow by the Assembly, and it requires school districts to report information related to American Indian children attending school in the district. The Assembly Education Committee also approved AB 103, which is a bill that would prohibit staff from referring to students by their preferred name and pronouns without parental permission. The committee also approved AB 100, which would prohibit transgender girls in K-12 schools from playing sports that match their gender identity. And this is going to be assembly on Thursday, March 20. The Wisconsin Legislature has a DOGE-inspired committee, they call it GOAT, which is the Government Operations Accountability and Transparency Committee. They have had their first meeting, and they heard testimony from the Department, from the DOA, DPI, DHS, DSPS, and the University of Wisconsin. There is no comparative, there is no committee like this in the Senate, it's just in the Assembly, so they're not sure how much can really get done. There are four, three bills that are, could impact school districts' ability to raise money through referendums, and they have been referred to the Committee of Education from the Senate. That's AB 71, which is the School District Operating Referendum, AB 60 on the referendum tax transparency, and AB 81, the School Referendum State Aid.
Well, we know there's a lot going on legislatively at the federal level as well.
Yep, they're in session, so they're getting things done.
Yeah, waiting to see how some of that impacts. All right. Board Cease to Report, Chrissy.
So the majority of this month's meeting was spent in closed session discussing the first round of interviews for the executive directors. So we had four candidates come in on March 11th, then wanted to say a big thank you to Jessie and a bunch of the other stakeholders, many superintendents from our area, most of the CESA's staff, and then the Board of Control interviewed. We have narrowed it down, and we will have second interviews on March 31st. So, but very small business meeting, mostly hiring conversations.
Yeah, getting close it sounds like, though. That's good. All right, moving on. Student Representative Report, Sophia.
Today, there's winter sports meeting, or winter sports awards, sorry. April 4th, middle school has a dance, which I think that should be exciting. I don't know. I wish we had a middle school dance, though, when I was in middle school. Like, what's up with that? Anyway, anyway. April 12th is prom, and I believe the theme is City of Stars. So I think it's looked really good. Yeah, April 12th, and then the 16th and 17th, there's middle school forward testing, and the freshmen and sophomores take their pre-ACTs. NHS, the current members have to turn in their hours by April 25th. So I need to get on that. Pickleball tournament, April 5th, and then the ACT we took last week, I believe. I think it went well. Hopefully I did good. I don't know, though. But that's it.
All right. Any questions for Sophia? All right, thank you, Sophia.
Thank you.
I don't have any misconceptions or rumors, and I was told no one signed in to speak. So I'll move right on to Board President's announcements. The first thing I will say is that the Region 3 WASBA has determined the date for the new member gatherings, and it is April 17th, which we do have both candidates here that will be on the ballot. Shannon Larson and Mike Swoboda. And I'm hoping that they are able to go to that gathering, and I'm hoping that some of the members of this board can also go. I think it's very helpful to have some of the board members with the new members when you are having this orientation. So if you can look on calendars and see, April 17th will work. From 7 till 9 in Green Bay.
At CESA 7?
At CESA 7. A place you know well.
Lots of time there in the next couple weeks.
The other thing is, tonight is the last meeting for both Chris Fly and myself in terms of regular meeting. Chris Fly has been with us for three years, so Chris, do you want to say anything about your experience?
It's something I wish, I really wish I could continue, but work schedules not going to let it happen, and I'm not going to bow out halfway through a term. So I'll let the two people that want to do it take over better sweet day. I wish I could stay on, but you guys are in a pretty good spot with Jessie and Amber, so pretty confident things will go well here.
I can echo that sentiment, that I think everything is in really good shape here. We've got like the top-notch leadership team over there. We've got a top-notch administrator, and I think our district, you know, is probably the best in the world. So, yeah, it's very bittersweet. I have spent so many years with so many great, different board members, and I'm really thrilled to see some of them here. We spent literally decades together, which is different than this new board, which will, I hope, have some longevity themselves and develop some of the relationships and camaraderie that we were able to do in the past. I am very, very proud of what has been done for this district and the progress we've made, and what we have available for our kids with all the different learning pathways. Of course, the Charter School is near and dear to my heart. But it's been an honor and a privilege to not only work with all these different board members through the years, but also serve this district and know that it's in good shape, and it will continue onward greatly. So that's all I have to say. So we will move on to...
Take a little break and celebrate you and Chris?
It would probably be nice for these people. So we will take a short recess. So moving on, Administration Reports, Jessie.
All right. Tonight, we've got two key takeaways. We're going to do an update on district finances, and then I will provide a kind of a broad overview on some district updates and some important dates that are coming up. So I'll turn it over to Amber.
Nice and simple this month, we are seven months into our fiscal year. We got some state aid payments in February, and title reimbursements were received. We did get our settlement for the second round of property tax revenue, so that's tax collections that happened in January. The municipalities were required to settle them by February, I think it was 20th. On their expenditure side, nothing real crazy there. We did have a pretty big outlay for replacement laptops that were purchased in February. This is routine servicing, just replacing some of the older laptops, so. And in Fund 27, we do have some increased cost there. We had more individualized placements this year than we were anticipating when we started the year. So we're keeping a close eye on that. It is likely, though, that we are going to have to increase the transfer out of the general fund to cover those. The IDA flow-through funds will be fully expended this year as a result of these individualized placements. There's been rollover funds from year to year for flow-through for the last probably five, six years running. So this will be the first year that we will not have rollover going into next year. So that's going to hurt a little bit next year. And then for the other funds, these are the non-operating ones. In Fund 39, we did have a debt payment that went out in February. This was our QZAB debt that we pay. It's actually a zero percent interest loan. And there is one more payment that needs to go out next year, and then that loan will be paid off as well. We have already collected the money for that payment, so it was not on taxes this year. The Fund 46, non-referendum capital, had no activity. We did most of that work in the beginning of the year. And then our Fund 49 referendum capital, we have on the next slide. So we had McKinney Street Progress Envoys that went out in February. They are nearing completion. I think they've only got maybe one or two invoices, small invoices that'll be coming up. So we're sitting pretty good. We had just under nine grand in interest earnings. I'm actually meeting with the American Deposit Management Team next week to look at our CDs that are coming due. Bayland Builders is working on the projects. They have people in doing measurements, but they have not given us an invoice yet. So that, we get 30 days after they give us the invoice to make that payment, so we're going to probably look at a few of the three-month CDs just to get things, get a little extra interest in. So we're doing good there.
All right. So part of my role is to oversee different departments, and I realize that we don't always highlight some of these departments in our admin updates. So I wanted to take this month and just kind of share a little bit about what's going on in technology, food service, transportation. So we have Jessie Durst, our Technology Director, give an update on some things that are happening right now in technology, so.
Thanks for my 30 seconds of fame, Jessie.
You got it.
So we are currently in the upgrade process of redoing our website. It is built, they're working on applying the theme to it. Still getting pictures and everything to start rolling into it, so it's making progress. Our goal is for June to get that rolling. New phone system is on our docket. Found out that our phone system is no longer going to be supported in the near future here, so I have been going out to bid for phone systems. I currently have four bids, two on-prem, two in the cloud. Our firewall is also an end-of-life, end-of-life, so we went out to erate this year for a new firewall. I selected a bid, a waiting bid for that about a month ago. So that will be put in the summer as well. Just an update on, we still are replacing student devices every four years, so that goes for first grade, fifth grade, and the ninth grade. That's been the norm since COVID, the greatest standard for most districts that I talked to. Another thing on the docket coming up in the near future here is our Wi-Fi. We've just put in in 2017, and it is also becoming an end-of-life in 2028. End-of-life means it's a wonder you receive support, so no software upgrades, no patches, plug fixes, or anything like that after 2028. So that'll be something we have to consider with this as well. Any questions?
All right. Do you just want to pull a plug in? We are looking for two full-time positions to fill right now. One being a cook at the middle school and high school here, and the other as a childcare teacher over at Pack of Pups. So you may have seen an ad in the Kiwanis Star that went out last, or on Saturday, so actively looking to fill those positions. So if you know anyone, please encourage them to apply. We have some new signs that are ordered. We're excited for this to go through. This will be at the middle school and high school in the fieldhouse. You can see the new conference signs, so our Packland Conference are the other schools that we compete against. We also are including new signs above the stage that will have the school song and the Star Spangled Banner. And then we'll also be replacing the conference championship signs that go above the bleachers as well. And then at the elementary school, we have these signs coming in next week, hopefully, from Creative Signs, so they're room signs that you can slide in teacher names, so they're reusable. We're replacing the restroom signs, and then also the exit signs. Food service, so we implemented a second choice option here at the middle school and high school. It's been going over very well. I would say about 50% of our kids have been using the second choice every day. It's been a little bit of a struggle being short-staffed in the kitchen, but Mary and Cynthia are making it work with what they've got, so we're hoping to continue that. And we're also seeking ways to always buy more local food that's grown around here. That's been one of our priority areas. We feel it's important to keep that, the funds local, and obviously with agriculture being so large in Kiwanis County, we think that's critical for us to do that, so. And then for transportation department, update, our city route continues to grow. I think more and more families are just becoming aware of it. That bus has more kids on it than any of our other buses, our rural routes right now. So again, we have five hubs that get picked up throughout the city before school and then drop off after school. Spring sports is upon us, as we know, and it's just a busy time for our bus drivers with softball, baseball, track and field, so our drivers are going to be very, very busy from now to the end of the year, I think.
We're doing okay with bus drivers?
We are struggling a little bit. Dave's been driving, and he's scheduled to drive a couple times. I'll be honest, I'm working and trying to get my bus license right now, so I'm trying to just fill in where we can, so. There you go, Chris. And then I just want to highlight some important dates that are coming up, so we have spring break next week for students and for staff. The spring election is April 1st. We have a pickleball tournament on April, Saturday, April 5th. It's going to be benefiting the foundation as well as the IBA or Charter School. As you heard, prom is April 12th. We have no school April 18th. The open enrollment window closes, so any families that are choosing to open enroll into Elgoma, that window closes April 30th. National Honor Society and our Student Award Night is going to be that Friday, May 23rd in the Performing Arts Center. Our graduation is Sunday, May 25th. No school that Monday for Memorial Day. And then our last day for students is May 31st. Coming quick.
All right. I guess that does it for you. Move on to Elementary Principal's Report, Katie.
Okay. My first item is just some general information about state assessments. So we are well into the swing of things. As Sophia mentioned earlier, when she gave her report, the 11th graders did take the ACT last week, Wednesday. We do have a couple of students that have yet to take that, but we're hoping, we haven't, the first window goes throughout the rest of this week, so I think we have three students left.
That's it, so you get real good percentage.
Yes.
Oh, that's awesome.
So hopefully by the time we leave for spring break, we'll have everybody. If not, there's two additional windows all the way through April. So we usually do okay in terms of getting most people to assess. At the elementary school, our third through sixth graders will be taking the forward exam the week of April 7th through the 11th. So teachers have started, we're kind of looking at student groupings. We like to have our students tested in smaller groups, so we've been thinking on that. And then also, as Sophia mentioned, forward exam for the middle and high school will be April 16th and 17th, with the pre-ACT also April 16th.
And do you do forward exam one subject a day, or do you just want to get it all done?
We usually do two tests a day, two sessions a day, yeah. And it's untimed, so it's a little bit flexible based on how long the students take. But usually we try to anticipate some of that with the student groupings. So students that we know need a little bit additional time, we'll put them together, and the ones that don't, we kind of try to be a little strategic with that, so. And then summer school, so we are set to hopefully hold summer school June 9th through the 27th this year. Lindsay Herman is once again coordinating summer school for us. She has worked to gather up, I want to say about 14 teachers so far. So hopefully information will be coming out about that soon. We are not doing a summer musical this year as part of summer school, so that's one big difference for this year. Not sure what that will look like in the future, but just kind of taking a break from that for the added challenges here of working around quite a few things that are taking place this summer with the referendum, and also floors, and kind of a little bit of everything, but we're prepared to be pretty flexible, so.
Any questions? Sounds good. All right. All right, moving on, Middle School High School Principal's Report, Dave.
Yeah, I just want to talk this month a little bit about the Huddle Program, which is run by a gentleman of the name of Zachary Ait. He started this program with three students and is now grown to about 20. There's 13 out of 10 consistently. What happens in this meeting, he meets, first of all, very strategically. He meets at the beginning of the week in the morning with kids. And he meets Wednesday about midweek in after-school time, or last hour of the school day. And then Friday, again, to get the kids ready to go into whatever they might be looking at on their weekend. So he works with kids who are going to be struggling with some of the events that happen outside of school largely. And in there, he does, teaches skills like journaling. All of the kids are required to journal. They do reflective practices in and above journaling, where they'll discuss certain topics, reflect that sort of events that happen at school or outside of school. It's very much a group supportive effort. Kids are taught to support each other and be reliable to each other. He does some mentoring as needed there. He also does activities where they'll do planning and visioning, where he has them really think about who they are, who they want to be, and what are the steps they need to take to become the people that they want to become. So it's a testament to the job he's doing, that he started with three. And now, like I said, there's 20 that have, that have attended the 13 consistently, attending those that ranges from seventh grade all the way up through high school. And then he does some work with the elementary school also, so.
Any impact on discipline or academic?
Yep, I would say absolutely. I can, I can't use names here, but I will tell you that there are a couple of students who will specifically credit Zach and the Huddle Program for being more in control of the decisions they make. See less, we had one student struggle with pretty physical outbursts in the beginning of the year, has had none since starting this program still. I mean, there's still challenges, don't get me wrong. There's still kids, and they still, they still struggle to process things, but definitely some of the kids have really learned how to process things in a much healthier way, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's been good.
Is he already on staff, or what does he teach?
He's a contractor.
Oh.
So we contract with him, and we use mental health grant funds to support that work.
He mentors an elementary student. He spends all day, almost all day Wednesday with this student, and goes to classes with him, and plays tennis, goes to specials. His days are phenomenal when his mentor is here. Still working on that transfer, all these skills, but has a great one.
Yeah, for sure. And again, there is no silver bullet for some of the issues our kids deal with, but this has definitely been a positive support for many of our kids. Then the next thing I want to talk about is the choir band trip, because numbers are fun. So just to give you an idea, 64 students are traveling this year. There are two directors, there are three extra adults, nine chaprons. Also shout out to Jennifer Massey for giving me this report. On their itinerary, they're going to Mammoth Cave, National Park, Grand Ole Opry, World War II Museum, French Quarter, Jackson Square. They're going on a steamboat ride on the Mississippi River. They're doing a haunted cemetery tour.
Those are fun.
They're doing a swamp tour, and they're performing at the Rockin Bowl outside the Steamboat Dock for the band, and then Our Lady of Guadalupe Church service for the choir. And Jen's been traveling for as long as she has been here. Started with Orlando, this is far back, should you remember. Orlando, they've done Chicago, Memphis, New York, Orlando, New York, New York and Nashville, Nashville, Gatlinburg, New York, Minnesota, and New Orleans. I asked her a little bit about what does she notice that the kids get out of these trips? Obviously building relationships with adults and with students. There's the cultural connections that are made through the music and the historical sites that they visit. Those are some things I suggested, and she said, yes, all of that and more. Connecting with students on a much deeper level is one of the highlights of every trip. In years past, more students would join band choir for the trips, but so recently, that's not the only reason that people will join. After graduating, Jen hears time and time again how much the trips have impacted kids' time in high school. She says she would like you to know she's eternally grateful that she works in a district that allows these opportunities. She loves traveling and sharing it with her students. And she says seeing kids in New York Times Square never gets old. She said she could, she said she could give, she can't even count, I think, all the examples of how going to New York City, New Orleans can change a student's view on music, city, travel. She said a lot of students don't have the means to travel as a family in our district, so this gives them an opportunity, and it can be life-changing. And she says there's lots of fundraising opportunities, and over $32,000 this year alone was fundraised by students and parents, so.
Excellent. Yeah, wonderful. When do they leave?
They leave, I don't know, it's probably Friday, Thursday. Got to be quiet here if you want to come to a tour.
Pat Finer, Elgoma Venture Academy and Pack of Pups Reports, Katie.
Yes, so first is, we have a visit from a teacher at St. Massacre. So he saw the old guy from Las Goas, New County, had come right before our project showcase, and he saw the video on his Facebook page, which really sparked his interest in the IBA. He's a special education teacher that really believes in all of the culture and learning for his students. So he was wondering kind of like how to get things started, how to get the ball rolling. And he came and he really wanted to talk about IBA and Pat Finer both, because he works with students that have benefited from Pat Finer. He's brought some students in to Pack Finer from St. Massacre in the past. So he stayed a couple hours in each spot, and he got to talk to kids, and he got to talk to the staff. And his email when he got back said he was in a culture shock when he got back to his school, just because of all the incredible things that have been going on in both spots, and how learning is more real-life, hands-on, community-based, and different than you seeing in the classroom. So it was just really affirming that the things that we are doing here are really incredible and working, and are very different than what's going on in a lot of our neighboring districts, because nobody else has a Charter School, or most of them don't have an alternative learning pathway of their students. So it's really great to have them come, and just be able to see all the great things everybody has got on Elgoma. And then I'll piggyback off Dave about just the opportunities for our students. We are leaving for Costa Rica on Wednesday at 1:30 in the morning. We have eight kids and three adults going. Some of the things our kids will be doing, wearing means of landing from the jungle, whitewater rafting, cave splunking, snorkeling, some of our kids are doing surfing lessons. We are doing a beach cleanup in Tamarito, so culture gets very... Um, we are doing a beach cleanup in Tamarindo, so Costa Rica is very, very eco-friendly and environmentally conscious, so, um, we are going to help with a beach cleanup while we're there. Um, myself and another student are not going whitewater rafting, but rather we are likely going to a wildlife rescue to volunteer instead. Um, and just of the eight kids we have, we have two kids who've never been on an airplane and four who have never seen the ocean, so. Really excited to just give them the experiences they're gonna have and kind of see just, you know, get in the public.
Yeah, once again, marvelous opportunities for our students. And it is, it is really nice to get outside perspective, um, on our programs, to remind us, you know, what we are doing is special and it does make a difference. And we are a model for other districts, you know. For so many years, you know, a lot of what we've started here, we've seen start in other districts and that, you know, that's a huge compliment. Thank you, Katie. Um, Special Ed Wellens report. Marie?
Yeah, we're trying to be new this year in the special ed department. Um, we've kinda gone back and forth between having our special education caseloads be rate-level bands versus matching some impairments. So a group of special ed teachers are needing to do kind of like a, a case study and, and, um, look through the data, the IEPs, to determine kind of how they want to divide the caseloads. Um, we have five special ed teachers that are EC through sixth grade and five that are seven through twelve and about fifty-three students, fifty-four at each building that are not including our, um, speech and language-only students, so. They're going to come up with as a team kind of how they're going to de- divide that, so more to come.
Yeah, okay. Alright, um, other items for discussion? I don't think we have anything on the docket, so we'll move right into action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes updated by twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
I propose, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us in the amount of one million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris Spanish. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Board of Candidators for April first, twenty-twenty-five election.
Moved.
Second. Motion made by Chris Spanish, seconded by Amy. Um, who are those Board of Candidators?
Myself.
Mick and Alison.
And Alison.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve summer school for twenty-twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris Fly. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Edger Policy sixty-one fourteen.
So moved.
I'll send it.
Alright, that was a policy that the Policy Committee had just omitted from last month's, um, packet, so.
It was, I think it was in your packet, but the number wasn't listed when we did all the approvals, so as a formality, we had to put the approval in this.
So we have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation of five hundred and fifty dollars from Redefining Futures Foundation, Logan and Ashley Brinkin, if they overdue lunch balances.
So moved.
Second.
I would like to say thank you to Redefining Futures Foundation. What a wonderful, what a wonderful thing this is. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to vote into executive session under Residency Statute nineteen point eight-five, subsection one, unseemly requests of persons matters, hires, staffing, and resignations.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion and a second, oh, call vote, Chris.
Yes.
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 Amy?
Yes.
And I also say yes.